Okay, Mr. De Silva, I began recording, please feel free to begin.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining our public work session this evening in the Maua Board of Education, January 20th, 2021. Please note, due to the current government-declared emergency, this meeting of the Maua Board of Education will not be available for members of the public to be physically present. Procedures for members of the public that wish to participate, including opportunities to email questions in advance of the meeting, can be found on our website. As an alternative to ensure transparency of board business and meet the guidelines by the New Jersey Division of Local Government Services, the board meeting will also be available to the public via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 863-934-74185, and the required password is 687944. Members of the public may also call into the meeting using the following phone number, During the public portion of this meeting, members of the public will be given the opportunity to participate verbally with the board. All members must provide their name and address and are reminded to follow participation rules stipulated in Board Policy 0167. I called this meeting to order at 7:06. Mr. Bleeker, please call the roll.
Mrs. Denise?
Yeah.
Mr. Gallo?
Here.
Here. Ms. Conoco?
Yeah.
Dr. Morthee.
Dr. Morthee.
Here.
Dr. Park? Ms. Secon? Here. Mr. Copeland?
Here.
Mr. De Silva?
Here.
At a quick notice of agenda.
Let me just. And Mr. Kismarski?
Not forgotten, I am here.
We don't need you. At a quick notice of agenda, this meeting has been provided to the Redwood News and the Record specifying that the Maua Board of Education will meet on January 20th, 2021 in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Maua, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township.
Copy was filed with the township. Mr. Gallo, would you lead us in the salute? Mr. Gallo, would you lead us in the salute, please?
Legion's, we are the United States of America, United States of General Republic, which is a republic, one nation, under God, liberty is the justice, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, agenda questions. Please leave your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you're asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you're here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. And I'll entertain a motion to open to the public, please. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Copeland. We're open to the public at 7:08.
Mr. De Silva, at this time, I have no questions that came to me prior to through the email address to send any questions or comments to. There's nobody typing in the chat, nor do I see any hands raised indicating that they would like to speak at this time with any questions on the agenda. Feel free to keep it open for another few moments, and then we can move on with the meeting.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close to the public, please. Dr. Morthee, second by Mr. Copeland again. We are closed at 7:10. Interim superintendent's report, Dr. Fitz. I know you've got some good news for us. You always do.
Thank you very much. We resumed school just a couple of days ago. And this is what I received in terms of comments. I got comments from staff, okay? Staff told me as I walked through the hallways at several of the schools, they told me that they are delighted to be returning to school and to be engaged with the students. I asked them, "How do you like this place? What do you see about this place?" This is the word they use. "The place is sparkling." Is sparkling. That's a very heavy term to tell you about the condition of our facility for children and for staff. As I moved around the district, I got a chance to talk to parents. Particularly like at Betsy Ross, when we are loading and receiving kids. You'll be surprised the kind of comments you can get from parents. Just sticking your head in the car door. Yeah, you get some, you get some good comments there. They don't have time to rehearse them. And they said, "Everything is going well. Anything else we need to do here? No, 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 no." It's like, hold what you have and keep going in that direction. Those are the comments that you're getting from parents, comments you're getting from staff. The next piece you need to look at, walk through the buildings when you have a chance, and just read the bulletin boards. Look at the display, the artwork of kids. It's creative, it's imaginative, it's rich. A lot of material and information content is there from the teaching of the staff. So there are multiple ways to get perceptions about what's going on in the district. And I tell you, I really enjoy going out there to visit the schools, just to talk to parents as they're getting out of their car, bringing their kids up the sidewalk, just to engage, to engage with them, to ask them, "Is there anything else that we need to be doing?" I'm constantly trying to get that kind of information from them. We do respond to all of our communications coming from parents in terms of emails and telephone calls, okay? And sometime we have to come as an executive team to determine how should we respond to it, who should be included in the telephone call, but we will return calls, we will get information back. And what I'm finding, many of the parents would like to join us. And when I talk about joining us, Dennis knows about this. He has parent groups. There's a parent group of parents of physicians and from the medical community that we talked to earlier. I talked to one parent today. He was asking some questions, but asking the questions, I answered the question, I offered him the invitation to join this group. He willingly accepted that invitation. So I'm sensing people want to be involved with us. And I'd like for us to continue to extend that carrot to our community.
Thank you. Mr. Bleeker, have anything for us?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. Handful of items for me this evening. First, since we've been going remote, I would normally update members of the public if there have been any asterisks or additions to the board agenda for this evening. We have none tonight. The board agenda that the board is taking action on is the same that was emailed to the public, or I should say posted online for the public earlier this week. So no asterisks on the agenda tonight for me to comment on for members of the public participating. I would like to briefly comment on item 15E on the agenda. That's our audit, acceptance of the audit for the year ending June 30th, 2020. Thank you to the audit firm that we work with, the Savatia, particularly the partner in charge, Ms. Heidi Waller, and Mr. Glenn Johnson, the lead auditor for our district. As always, it's been a pleasure working with them and look forward to the collaboration working with them each year. Also want to thank, of course, the business office staff and all other offices and central office. The audit, as I've said in other years, does not focus solely on the finances. It does include a review to a degree of IEPs, of board minutes, of transportation reports. It does touch in many different areas. So thank you for the cooperation of all those different areas and the staff in assisting our auditors performing the task at hand. And also to the Finance and Facilities Committee, the auditors spent some time with them in December discussing the draft version of the audit and given explanation of their findings and the financial status of the district. So thank you for that participation as well. It's a long process, and thank you to everybody involved. The other item I wanted to bring, I had a couple of board members reach out to me, so I thought it was beneficial to briefly discuss it for everybody here. Item 15H, which is a change order for a lighting project. It's specifically for a change order to lighting project being done at Maua High School. It's a replacement of the fluorescent technology light bulbs to LED light bulbs. After speaking further with the contractor and with Mr. Romero, our director of buildings and grounds, we are going to go to a higher level of technology, if you will. Rather than just a replacement of taking the old bulbs out and putting in LED bulbs, including a replacement of the ballast, we are going to take the fixture out entirely and put a whole brand-new fixture back in. We are getting a rebate and some savings back from this through an energy grant that is available to us. And it is, give us consistency at the high school as well, since this is the same lighting that we recently replaced and put in both the cafeteria and the library in the last few years. Yes, Ms. Secon? For those that may not have heard, Ms. Secon asked if the old bulbs and fixtures could be donated to any of the school system. We are going to, obviously, anything that is still in good condition. We have in the past sometimes sold via auction, so we would entertain that if that is possibility after we examine the condition of the equipment. Thank you very much. That's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Fair?
Yes, I have a few things worth celebrating that have been occurring since the beginning of the new year. So we have the Say Something Nice campaign going on at Maua High School. I don't know if anyone, any of you have heard about the campaign. The High School Student Government Association, they started this campaign where staff and students are able to use Padlet or Google Forms to post positive messages about their colleagues or their teachers or their fellow students. And as of the second week of January, there were over 300 positive posts. It's a really great way to start off the school year. And what they had to say was, was really meaningful. So that's something to celebrate. Another piece, on January 15th, we had Alumni Return Day. Like many things right now, what usually occurs in an in-person panel has now transitioned into online. The high school has done a great job of being flexible, and they made this opportunity online as well. So various Maua alumni joined our students to share their experiences through this webinar. So they were able to provide their authentic experiences in colleges. Students who are prospective students for those colleges have the opportunity to ask questions, that sort of thing. So what's great is, while things are different, we're still moving forward, which is nice. The third item to share with you, at your seats, we have our most updated version of our centralized kindergarten registration letter. Our goal is to send this out in the next few weeks for the 2021, 2022 school year, which is, it's pretty crazy to even utter that year. But last year, as you may remember, we were able to centralize the process for the first time. It's a really awesome event. It was a real great opportunity to do things with consistency and also allow our incoming parents the opportunity to just get some FaceTime with people from those buildings. We wanted to keep that intact in any way that we could. So in the coming weeks, our goal is to send this out to potential kindergarten families for Betsy Ross School, George Washington School, and Lenape Meadows School. Prelimarily, our date for kindergarten registration is March 34th. We selected that date because right now we are scheduled for virtual Wednesday. And this would allow for the opportunity to give parents the choice to do the registration process completely online or come in person. The only difference would be, in order to minimize capacity in the building, in an empty building, which would be good, is to have parents sign up for appointment times. So we have Google Forms set up for each building. We're going to set up the STEAM facility space a little differently. We'll have different school buildings in each row, both all three in the PD Center. So that's something that we're excited about continuing. And of course, we'll follow all school safety protocols, including Plexiglas, hand washing, social distancing, and mask wearing. So we're looking forward to continuing this tradition in our district. And again, it's providing parents with that option to come in person if they'd like, but if they don't feel comfortable or they can't, they can still complete the registration process completely online. And lastly, I just wanted to highlight our work with the Parent Advisory Council. We had a meeting earlier today. Dr. Fitz referenced earlier our work with a variety of parent groups. And Mr. Copeland has introduced the Parent Advisory Council to the community through the lens of our Community Relations Committee of the Board. So we're able to meet with a cohort of full-remote, remote parents and hybrid parents to share their perspectives from themselves as parents, as well as to share their perspectives of their children as students in our instructional program. So this again, it wasn't the first time this cohort met, but it was, it was great to continue an honest discussion where the parents were able to provide us with some really, some really valuable feedback, and it was very honest. So we celebrated, but we made sure not to celebrate for too long because we're also focused on ever improving. So we're looking to get tidbits from them to see how we can just make our programs better. I know that Dr. D'Tor was going to share something. Did you want to share here, or do you want to share during the instructional report? Yeah, why aren't you sharing now? Because you had shared during our Parent Advisory Council.
So to speak to the feedback today from the Parent Advisory Council, as Mr. Fair said, that it's been, it's been so valuable, especially for my office. Understanding that we have a whole new norm right now, and there's really no playbook for it, we want to understand how it's being received by, by our families. So the majority of our meeting today was anchored into our changes to our schedule for our fully remote over the past two weeks. And just to kind of give you a summary of that and a rationale, just like we did for the Parent Advisory Council, we went all the way back to our, our surveys back in October, November. And what did the parents and the teachers and the students really say in that survey? And a lot, a large part of that survey was grounded in, "We need more time. We need more time with the teacher. We feel like that is the most crucial piece right now." So we're, we're ever trying to find, "When can we do it? How can we do it?" with all the restrictions that we had. So we felt like those two weeks were a perfect time for us to get creative. Now, those variations changed depending on, on the grade level. At the elementary, we shifted it significantly. It went from that two and a half hours to close to five. Now, obviously, the teachers had the ability to create breaks in there. There was a lunch embedded in there, and we, we provided them with PD of breaking them up into small groups. So it wasn't just a stand-and-deliver type of experience. But we justified that because we feel that we can get all the kids into one classroom. Some of the feedback that we received from the Parent Advisory Council, they were excited to see the PM class. The M kids were excited to see their, their classmates from the other class. There are other, other feedback, which I'll get into in a little bit, was positive as well. But we felt like that was an opportunity for us to get the extended period of time without the health stipulations that we have in the classroom. At the secondary level, we increased each period a couple of minutes, but already they had an extended period of time already. But everybody logged in each day, which is a nice piece that they were all on screen together. The feedback that we received, like Dennis said, was very positive from the, from the parents. But we really tried to punch holes of, you know, what, what could we do differently? What I can tell you is I thought there were, there were going to be more feedback at the elementary level. The feedback that we did receive was overwhelmingly positive, and they appreciated the time that they had. We did have a conversation along the lines of, when you look at screen time, we have to really break it up into different categories. We can't justify screen time for our kids when they're sitting and they're learning from their teacher. That's totally different than being on Instagram and Snapchat and gaming. You know, we're trying to make this an educational experience. Nonetheless, there are things that we can control and things that we can't. So we did try to break that, break it up throughout the day because of fatigue. But, but that being said, it's something that we're going to constantly start, start to chop away at. Some of the feedback we did receive was specific to fatigue. We had some parents say, "You know what? It's a long day. We wish that we could just do it in the morning and then have the independent work in the afternoon." We had a really good conversation by saying, "I totally understand what you're saying. I get it." But we have to understand, when they do come back, their stamina needs to increase about, specific to learning. Right now, we've been operating in this world since March, and their stamina has decreased because of all the different obstacles that we've had along the way. So that was noted and appreciated, and something that we have to be cognizant of. So we do understand that it's possible that these kids are going to be fatigued, and we need to be sensitive to that, and we need to be understanding. So that's something that we're going, we're talking to our teachers about. But we're constantly looking at our schedule. Nonetheless, the initial feedback from the schedule was overwhelmingly positive. I'm not saying that the Parent Advisory Council speaks for the entire district. I think it's something that we should look into, surveying the, the district as a whole moving forward to see what those adjustments felt like in all the different households. But it was a nice initial response from a great cross-section of both hybrid and fully remote, as well as K through 12 parents. So it was, it was definitely beneficial across the board. The final aspect that I think that we have to be hyper-focused on is we spoke to a parent that has a child that's new to our district. And something that we need to go back to our, our schools about and speak to is, what are we doing for our students who are brand-new this year? How are we getting, continuing to stay committed to having them engage with others and create those relationships outside of just the academic time? How can we get creative? Some of the elementary schools did interactive lunches because they were able to roll coverage, which we thought was awesome. Some other schools were able to infuse a creative break. Those are the things that we need to stay committed to and look for opportunities that our kids can not only learn, but also can just be kids and, and look across the screen. And, and I think to use the parents' words, "Just be silly." And that's okay. So that's something that, that, that was valuable for us, not only building relationships for our new students, but letting our, our long-lasting students just be kids. So that, that was, that was our feedback.
Thank you, Dr. D'Tor. And just to circle back to the kindergarten registration letter, the version that you have may be updated between now and a week from now. The updated version will be shared with all the email before it goes out to the candidate. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kismarski, do you have a report for us tonight?
I have a couple of quick things, if you don't mind. Excuse me. Sorry I couldn't be there in person. As a reminder to everyone listening to me and anyone who'll be watching this later, to remind, remind your children and yourselves to wear your mask, wash your hands. I'm very happy that school started this week. I cannot wait for the Kismarski family to join. With that said, in, in, I guess juxtaposition to the last meeting we had, where there was, you know, a lot of, a lot of worry, a lot of angst about what we've seen at the Capitol just before our meeting. To come today, obviously, is a very historical day. It's a great day for our country, as always, when we have the peaceful transfer of power from one president to another. It is also a historical day with the elevation of Kamala Harris to be the, the first female, the first black, the first South Asian American to, to hold that position. But also a great day for Maua, as I could also bring it back to, to what we do here. It's, it's a great thing to look at the White House now and, and know that a student of the Maua School District is there now. Dr. Jill Biden, who was, who attended Maua Schools from third through fifth grade. So regardless of your politics, it's, it's a great day. It's, it's, it's a great day for, for democracy, for, for our country, for the republic. So just, just wanted to put that out there. And also, lastly, I guess, you know, a little more, a little more closer to home in some of the things we do. We, the, the Board of Education, last night started the process of searching for a new superintendent. We had five interviews and talked late into the evening. Or the early morning, actually. It's one of the things, one of the most important things we do as a board. And we have three more interviews on Thursday night, and then we will go into round two. So I wanted to make the public aware of that. But other than that, that is my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
And we have any board committee reports? Mr. Gallo, what do you got?
Two things. I just wanted to say that just prior to tonight's meeting, the Finance and Facilities Committee met with Roger Pelletier and John Pascal, who presented a proposal on how to livestream some athletic events and potentially some other performing arts-type events in our school district. So we'll be looking at that proposal over the next couple of days, and we will make a decision shortly. The other aspect of our Finance and Facilities Committee work will be starting in Ernst as we join with Kyle on the budget development process. For negotiations, I want to welcome John Denise to the committee, and we will shortly begin discussions with our administrator and supervisors representatives to begin on a follow-on contract to the contract that would be expiring in June. So we have a busy year ahead.
Yes, we do. Dr. Morthee?
Um, so since I zoomed from the last meeting, I didn't have an opportunity in person to congratulate Mr. Kismarski as our new board president, Mr. De Silva as our first vice president returning, and Ms. Conoco as our second vice president. Welcome and look forward to working with all of you. In terms of instruction and curriculum, want to welcome our returning members, Ms. Secon and Mr. Gallo, and we welcome our newbie, Mr. Copeland. There is a hazing process that, you know, but we'll let you in on. Okay. I also wanted to welcome the students in our district back after a little extended break and wish everyone a good year. And let's hope that all the changes that Dr. D'Tor spoke about and some of the things that we're doing, that we're trying to be very responsive to parent feedback, to student feedback in the delivery of curriculum. And the one thing I wanted to highlight, because I also attended the Parent Advisory Committee meeting today, was one thing that came up was this concept at the high school of office hours. And that, that parents spoke, and I don't, I had high school kids, they're now in college. I don't think they went to office hours. But it seems the virtual concept of office hours is working very well. And the feedback, just one little tidbit, was that parents are appreciative, but children are looking forward to those office hours. And going, zooming, and reaching teachers is needed. So hopefully, something that comes out of this is the process of working more intimately with the faculty and the staff. And the thing we keep hearing about is what a great job the teachers are doing in this district. And parents and students seem to be very happy with that and appreciative. So again, let's have a great year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morthee. Mr. Copeland?
Thanks, Rick. From a Community Relations Committee standpoint, I just wanted to thank Mike, Dennis, Lisa, and Dr. Fitz for taking the time with the Parent Advisory Committee. Dennis and I talked before this meeting, and we really believe that this is going to be a great advisory committee that will be able to move forward. that will be able to move forward throughout the years and can be a really great resource for, not just for the board, for, but mainly for central office administration. So thank you, everyone, for committing yourselves to that committee. From Mawa Schools Foundation, Jamie Brisby asked me just to remind everyone that they're still doing their Mawa Pride campaign, One District, One Community. You can find more information on it on their website, mawaschoolfoundation.org. They're selling donations for lawn signs for our staff and Mawa Pride ribbon. And she also wanted to ask, she asked me to announce too, that they're going to be opening up a spring grant cycle for the teachers. More information will be coming out soon about that. So if teachers are watching, please keep an eye out for that. So thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, board member remarks, comments on non-agenda items. Anybody got anything? Dr. Morthe?
Um, I just wanted to appreciate that, what Mr. Kuzmarsky said. And I just wanted to give a little tidbit. I didn't know Jill Biden went to the Mawa Public Schools. But, you know, a great highlight for education today and for teaching. And especially as we hear that our new First Lady may be continuing to teach. So again, a very admirable profession, and we thank all our teachers. And for Kamala Harris, the South Asian part, she's actually from the part of India that my family hails from, the southern part of India. So again, to, you know, women everywhere and women of all descents. You know what? You keep striving, you keep trying. And, you know, one day you can be vice president and maybe president. So anyway, a great day for us. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Gallo?
I guess just wanted to piggyback on Prema and Ben's comments. One of the amazing things that I saw today was Amanda Gorman, a 22-year-old woman of extraordinary literary talent. And I would ask all of our high school students to spend five and a half minutes and watch it and realize that you are a few short years away from something as enormous and as graceful and as inspiring and as beautiful as the words that Amanda spoke today. Each of you is capable of doing that. And she had a unique opportunity to showcase her skills today. But every Mawa student has that capability. And I invite you to watch that for five and a half minutes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to move old business. Mr. Gallo, second by Dr. Morthe. Mr. Bleeker, take the role, please.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Ccone? Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzmarsky?
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion on 15A through N. New business? Mr. Gallo, second by Ms. Ccone. Mr. Bleeker, please.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Ccone? Mr. Copeland?
Yes on all, but I need to abstain on L and check number 101437.
Thank you. Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzmarsky?
Yep.
May have a motion on 16A through N personnel. Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. Denise. Mr. Bleeker.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Ccone? Mr. Copeland?
Yes, and thank you to the volunteers that are volunteering their time for the school's safety committees.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzmarsky?
Yep.
Public questions and comments. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. May have a motion to open to the public. Mr. Denise, second by Ms. Ccone. We are open to the public at 7:40.
Mr. De Silva, we have two questions that have come through the chat. A reminder to anybody, when you are typing a question, please identify yourself and your address within the district so we can keep that as part of the record. Both questions came from username logged on as Evelyn. First question is, how many candidates are being interviewed for the superintendent position? I believe that was answered earlier by Mr. Kuzmarsky during his president's report. We interviewed five, five candidates were interviewed last night, and three are being interviewed tomorrow. A total of eight candidates in the first round. And thank you, Evelyn, for providing your name and address. Evelyn Slotbauer, 43 Thunderhead Place. Ms. Slotbauer's second question, will a copy of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFR, for the 1920 year be available on the district website? And if so, under which tab will it be posted? I can answer that question. After the board's action this evening, we will upload the CAFR to the state repository. And within the Business Department of the Business Office section of the website, there is a link to that repository, state website, where all our audits for the past probably about 15 years are posted. That one will be posted within the coming weeks as we upload it, and the state updates their website. Okay, and Ms. Slotbauer acknowledged the responses to those questions. I do have one member of the public who does have their hand raised to speak. So I will unmute them right now. Identified in the attendee list as Ms. Deidre Wilson. Ms. Wilson, can you?
Hi.
Hear us. Thank you. We can hear you.
Thank you. I live at 10 Judith Ancore in Mawa, born and raised. Thank you for all you guys are doing. Mawa has done an incredible job keeping schools open and, at the same time, being laser-focused on keeping everyone safe. Thank you very much for that. I wanted to ask the board to consider live streaming athletic and other events at Mawa High School. Many districts in Bergen County have had it for years. I did a little research, Ramsey, Paramus, Westwood, Riverdale, Pascot Hills, Dumont, Fort Lee, Lakeland, Ridgefield Park, Indian Hills, Clifton, et cetera. I think that's important. I didn't really know too much about it. So I couldn't find a school that actually doesn't currently provide live streaming for the community. Due to the pandemic, many sports have limited capacity. So no fans will be able to see any games, basketball, wrestling, volleyball. All spring sports are still up in the air, even outside. In the fall, there were no student fans for football, which a lot of the kids really had a hard time with. As a senior parent, it would be fantastic to see basketball games through live streaming. As of now, the only games that fans will get to see will be when they play away, opposing teams, which I'm thankful that they currently have live streaming. Just as important, though, the fans, the Mawa community, students, will be able to watch and cheer for their peers as they compete. Mawa sports is a huge part of building school community. At a time when people, especially our students, feel disconnected, this is a great way for the Mawa Board of Ed and Superintendent to bring back some of what the students and Mawa community have been missing and keep us all connected. It has been a long 10-plus months, and while progress is made and we're all very hopeful, school events and large crowds being together, it's uncertain when that can happen. School plays, concerts, events, not just sports, could also be shared through live streaming. Please consider providing live streaming for our community that will benefit everyone now and in the future. And I can't thank you guys enough for all your dedication to our Mawa Schools and all that you have done and continue to do. And you're really appreciated. I just want you to know that I'm a teacher and I actually am a coach at Mawa for track. So just know how appreciated you guys are. So thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
First, Mrs. Wilson, I just want to thank you for your kind comments about the efforts of the board, and especially of our administrative staff on, on keeping the schools open and operating safely. Second, we did meet shortly before this meeting with Roger Pelletier and John Pascal to review a proposal that is under consideration to provide that live streaming service. We expect to make a decision probably in the next week or so. And then there are logistical elements, if we were to move forward, that we would have to resolve and announce to the community. But it is under serious consideration. I hear your concerns loud and clear, and I agree with you wholeheartedly that our extracurricular activities are certainly part of the lifeblood of our school district and a vital part of our students' learning experience.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ms. Wilson, I'm going to mute you again. If you have any further comments, just raise your hand, and we will unmute you again. Thank you again. Mr. De Silva, oh, Ms. Ccone, do you have? Okay. That's okay. Mr. De Silva, at this time, there are no other comments in the Q and A feature of the public session, nor do I have any other hands raised or indication of members of the public who wish to speak. So you are okay to close the meeting to public when you see fit.
Motion to close to the public, please. Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. Gallo. We are closed at 7:47. And I don't believe we need an executive tonight, correct? And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Gallo, second by Dr. Morthe. We are adjourned at 7:47. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.